Good evening, everyone. I'm happy to welcome you to the City Council meeting for April 15th, 2024. If you will go ahead and join me for a pledge of allegiance, please. Thank you very much.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, everybody. And I will go ahead and mention Ms. Trimble for the roll call. We have 11 councilors present, one online, that's Councilor Vasika. And Councilor Jordan is absent this evening. All right, we'll go ahead and there are no minutes to approve this evening. And so that brings us to item number three, which is to announce changes to committee meeting agendas and committee membership approvals. Ms. Trimble, do you have any changes to the committee schedule?
I'm not aware of any changes.
Okay, I'm just gonna look around here, colleagues, see if there's anything. We don't see any changes anybody's proposing. Okay, the committee schedule for April 17th is as stands and available online for folks wishing to see that. So now we move on to number four, which is special presentations and proclamations. And the first is a neighborhood council update. And we have Miller Creek Neighborhood this evening, I believe. So come on up, please introduce yourself by saying your name and spelling your last name, please. And it's nice to have you here.
I'm Jack Walton.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mike. Okay, gotcha.
I'm Jack Walton, W A L T O M. I live up on Jeff Drive, 5050. I represent Miller Creek Neighborhood. And so for our update to the council, thank you all for allowing me to share. The Miller Creek Neighborhood Leadership Team held their 2023 General Meeting last August. They hosted a candidate forum for the city council candidates running for Ward 5 to meet and learn about more about them. The Miller Creek Leadership Team is participating in the Neighborhood Cleanup Day on April 27th. The cleanup will be at Maloney Ranch Park from 11 until 5:00 p.m. There will be a raffle and those who participate will be entered into a drawing. We have some gift certificates to hand out. Kevin Slovart, City Engineer for Service Transportation, came to the leadership team in January to share information about the Lower Miller Creek Road. The upgrades there that's proposed by Jeanette Rankin School is from Linda Vista Boulevard to Jack Drive project. The Miller Creek Neighborhood have a traffic concern specifically at the intersection of Highway 93 and Lower Miller Creek Road. The team would like to learn more about if there are any projects in work for this area, like a timing change for the traffic lights or an additional left turn provision exiting Miller Creek. Sometimes vehicles are backed up to Briggs and they take at least three turns to be able to make a left-hand turn going south on 93. The leadership team has been collecting email addresses for neighborhood information to help save neighborhood funds on large neighborhood-wide manings. We have over 100 people that attend our annual meeting. And so we've been collecting emails. Our manings cost us about $800 to do a mailing. So we're looking at trying to use other methods besides manings. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate you being here. Maybe you'll stay there for a minute just to see if anybody has any questions. And I want to make sure I had your name. It's Jack. Is it Walton?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you, Mr. Walton. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Walton? Any councillor questions? Councillor Campbell.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a comment. Yeah, thank you for your work with that neighborhood council up there. I know you guys are really active and I appreciate you mentioning the forum last year and appreciate being invited to that. And you guys are actively involved in the committee up there and you know, look forward to further communication with your council as days go by. So thank you very much.
You're welcome.
And Mr. Walton, the question, it looks, we can coordinate with Melissa and Kalina with our Public Works Department and work to get you some information on the question you asked around Highway 93 and Lower Miller Creek Road.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely, thank you very much. Appreciate your service. Appreciate you being here tonight. Thank you. Just for the good of the order, Ms. Trimble, I misspoke earlier and did not mention that Councillor Anderson is also unable to join us tonight. So she is also absent. So my apologies. We have 10 councilors here and it is Jordan and Anderson that are absent. Okay, thank you for that. All right, we have one proclamation to read this evening and that is a proclamation for Earth Day. So this is in combination or in partnership with Missoula County as well. So whereas the climate crisis is caused by human activity and is adversely impacting an overwhelming majority of human and natural systems locally and across the globe, and the most vulnerable people and systems are disproportionately affected by the climate crisis, which poses extraordinary challenges such as public health emergencies, natural disasters, food and water shortages, and economic disruption. And whereas it is understood that the citizens of every community must step forward and take action to combat these global challenges. And whereas the city of Missoula and Missoula County have been engaged in environmental stewardship and climate action-related commitments, projects, work, and planning for many years, including joint commitments to climate resilience and achieving 100% clean electricity for the Missoula urban area by 2030. And whereas the city of Missoula and Missoula County have aligned our local efforts with the principles of the 2016 Paris Climate Agreement and joined public and private partners in Missoula and across the globe in advancing meaningful climate action in alignment with the goals of this agreement. Now therefore, we, the Missoula Board of County Commissioners and the city of Missoula in the state of Montana, do hereby recognize the 22nd day of April 2024 as Earth Day and call on our communities, including all residents, businesses, and institutions, to continue engaging in the meaningful climate action that is necessary to achieve our goals. Thank you. All right, so I will just give us a little preview for our meeting this evening. We don't have any public hearings, but we do have an item of new business. And I, we do have a staff member, Public Works Director Jeremy Keen is here for that. Additionally, of course, we have our items on the consent agenda. And then we do have an item under regular business and that is the Public Works Committee in which we have a recommended motion for a sidewalk policy. So that's how we're looking this evening. I did want to mention that the lucky folks in the audience are the first to engage in our new system for keeping track of time. So do let us know how it goes, but rather than me holding up a card or attempting to manage the public comment time period, we did get ourselves a system to make it easier, I think, on everybody, including our constituents, at the microphone. So you'll see a little beep up here. It looks a little bit like Price is Right, but we do not have any gifts or things to give away, unfortunately, just our goodwill. Okay, great. We'll go ahead and move on then. No public hearings, as I mentioned, so we'll move on to new business. And the new business item 6.1 is to approve a grant agreement for the 2023 Raise Downtown Safety and Mobility Project. And so we have Mr. Keen, again, who is the Public Works Director on. And Mr. Keen, I will hand it over to you. And if you could go ahead and cover again why this is a new business and not necessarily in a committee report, that would be great.
Great, thank you, Mayor. Jeremy Keen, Director for Public Works Mobility. We're requesting City Council approve and authorize the mayor to sign the 2023 Raise Grant Agreement. And we were notified last week after the referral deadline that Federal Highway Administration, U S D O T, is ready to sign the agreement. We've worked out all the details. And so we, in the interest of moving ahead quickly, at their request, we got this on new business for the meeting tonight. The Downtown Safety Access and Mobility Project, Downtown SAM, is a project we've been working on for a couple of years. And this is the next step in getting all of the details worked out. So the grant was submitted by the Missoula Metropolitan Planning Organization in partnership with the city of Missoula and the Montana Department of Transportation back in February of '23. And we received notice of award in June of 2023. And now this grant agreement is all the details around the financials and specific requirements for a $24.5 million federal grant and a local match of $1.16 million. The grant includes the Front and Main Two-Way Restoration Project, Higgins Avenue Corridor Improvements, and Riverfront Accessibility Improvements. And we set out with four big project goals. Safer streets for all modes of transportation, improved access and circulation for downtown, creating an inviting streetscape that showcases the downtown and supporting economic health and investment in the downtown area. And we've more or less been able to keep on schedule here. We're a little bit behind, but we are at the point of the grant agreement, starting our consultant selection in 2024 and into '25. We'll be working on the preliminary design and NEPA, which is National Environmental Policy Act. That's a requirement to document all of the impacts of the project and mitigation requirements. And ultimately, looking at construction in '26 to 2028. And there'll be lots of opportunities for public involvement along the way. We've just recently formed our Downtown SAM Working Group, which will be an advisory committee to the project, group of citizens to help us make decisions as we go through the design and also provide information back to all of you in the general public and downtown business owners and other stakeholders. So with that, I'm happy to take any questions and thank you for your time tonight.
Great, thank you, Mr. Keen. We'll go ahead and open it up for questions from council. Any questions tonight? Councillor Campbell and then Councillor Jones.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Perhaps there's a question for Ms. Trimble, just administratively speaking. I'm just wondering, this item under new business tonight, I know it was placed on our city website for council agenda last Friday, but I'm wondering if there was any other occasion prior to last Friday that this was served, notice of this particular item happening tonight prior to being placed on the city's website on Friday?
Not that I'm aware of. Any business that it goes on to the agenda approximately 48 hours before a public meeting is considered perfectly noticed?
Ms. Trimble, would you mind repeating that? Your microphone just went out a little bit and I think it's probably good for the public to hear that.
Sure, no problem. So a little more in depth than that. The state law does not have a requirement for most things for a time period of notice. But the general consensus, as well as precedent that was found in some court cases, says that about 48 hours is our notice timeline for perfectly noticing items. And so that is what we go with in the city. There wasn't, this wasn't noticed on any other meeting agendas or anything that I'm aware of, but it was on this agenda. So it hasn't been properly noticed as of today.
Thank you.
You bet. I saw Councillor Jones and then Councillor Sherrill.
Thanks, Jeremy, for the information on this. And it's just a great project. I'm very excited about it and a long time coming. I think you referenced this, but I know that the last few months there's been a lot of work put into creating, I don't know if it's an advisory group or a working group, or there's kind of your key stakeholders. And that is completed now as part of this process. Like that work is, sorry, that work is done and you've got those people and that group ready to go?
Yeah, that's correct. So while we were waiting for the grant agreement to get approved back in Washington, DC, we took the time to ask for volunteers to apply for our working group and formed a committee of 19 people. We looked at a wide variety of interests in the downtown to try to make sure we got a good representative group. And we've got a great group of folks that are really committed to being with us for the next three years and helping us steer the project.
Great, thank you. I'm excited about this and I like having that working group overlay. I think really keeps it connected to the community. So thanks.
Councillor Sherrill.
Yeah, thanks. I was just gonna comment that on top of the working group, there was a really robust public process around this in the last, kind of, I don't know how long it was, year. I don't know if you want to speak to that, Jeremy, but I just think that's important since it's on new business for the public to understand.
Sure, yeah. This project really combined three different efforts that we were working on, the downtown, that all came out of the downtown master plan, which had thousands of people participate. But more recently, in the last couple of years, we had a lot of public involvement around the Higgins Corridor project. And we're also concurrently working on design of the front and main conversion. So this brings it all together. We kind of brought that all together with the grant agreement in February and then a town hall style meeting back in May of '23 to really talk about what was included in the grant and to talk through some of the issues that still are out there that folks still need to hear more about and we need to resolve in the project design. So that process will move forward now with the grant approval and being able to work through this working group and also more general public meetings to make sure that really considering all the different interests and that the project does the best that it can to balance all of those different interests.
Councillor Becerra.
Thank you. Yeah, I just wanted to say that this is a really important step, a significant step in the process of getting this work going. And I believe that staff has been working pretty diligently to make sure that a good cross-section of the community is represented in that working group. And Jeremy, do you know when or where that information can be found so that the public can see who sits on that committee?
Yeah, if you go to our Engage Missoula page for Downtown SAM, you can find some information about the working group, including a memo that we put together for the mayor going over our selection of the working group members and the different criteria that we considered in picking the group.
Absolutely. Thanks for your questions. Other questions? Not seeing any here in the room. Not seeing any online. All right, then we'll go ahead and entertain a motion and I will look to our Public Works Committee Chair for that motion, if you wouldn't mind, Councillor Becerra.
Thank you. The motion is to approve and authorize the mayor to sign the 2023 Raise Grant Agreement.
Great, thank you. All right, motion is on the floor and we will open it up to public comment on this agenda item. And so are there members of the public that wishes to speak to this agenda item this evening? Not seeing any here in the room. How about online? Not seeing any online. Okay, that concludes public comment. We'll bring it back to the council one more time to see if you have any discussion, questions, comments. Okay, yeah, Councillor Campbell.
Thank you again, Madam Mayor. I just, I'm concerned. I appreciate Ms. Trimble's response so far as, you know, legal, the legal process for notice for issue that we're dealing with here and now for the agreement. I just can't help but think though, just, I'm trying to figure out how to say this. I just think the optics of it look bad. You know, this is something that's not been without contention for some time from the downtown business community, from others in the city here. And, you know, I saw this show up on the agenda Friday and it left me scratching my head, well, where'd this come from? And, you know, I get legally from that standpoint, 48 hours. If that's what it is, that's what it is. But, and I know, I appreciate the fact too that we're up against a time constraint with, you know, federal requirements. Again, in signing this, you know, grant agreement and making sure that, you know, we're not losing out on that money. But it is a considerable amount of money. It's a considerable amount of federal money, tens of millions of dollars. And it's in excess of a million dollars of city of Missoula money as well. I mean, it's far and above a drop in the bucket. And I just, you know, in retrospect, looking at, you know, where we're at now and how it was put on the agenda and, you know, how we're deliberating yet at this point. I know only 48 hours notice, 48 hours notice to the public for something that has had contention in the past. Although, you know, I could see it certainly, you know, legal, but I think, you know, down the line for other such events in the future, I think we need to look closer at how we go about just making sure that we're doing everything we can to be fully transparent with what it is we're doing, that, you know, the public and maybe they want comment, maybe they don't, but at least that they have the time to gather the information and come in, comment, come in online. You know, I looked at Engage Missoula and I didn't see any set dates there for this meeting as well. I know Engage Missoula has been up and running on this for some time for the Raise Grant. So, and, you know, that's all good and well, but, you know, for this to basically pop up in my mind out of nowhere and us, you know, looking to sign off on seven figures worth of city money, I just find personally troubling. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Campbell. And Mr. Keen, I see your hand is up. And so are you wanting to speak in, because we've got a couple other council questions or comments coming. And before I switch, I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Keen. I will just give you the, what I would love to interject with here briefly is that we've been waiting about nine months for this contract from the federal government. And part of the issue at the federal level is that there has been a lot more resources made available through the Infrastructure and Jobs Act and through the Inflation Reduction Act. And they're having staffing issues as are other parts of the country, both in the public sector and the private sector. We had an opportunity to meet with Senator Tester's State Director in regards to this contract. We had concerns as staff that we hadn't seen the contract yet and that we wanted to proceed forward with the Downtown Safety Accessibility and Mobility Working Group. And we really need the contract in place in order to really start the public process. And, you know, whether that helped get it moved through or not, we're not sure. We would have certainly appreciated more of a timeframe to bring this through the regular committee schedule. And I think they realize they may be up against some funding requirements or something, which is why they've asked it to be returned so quickly. So I couldn't agree more that we would want to go through our normal channels. As a reminder, this is all federal dollars in the sense of this contract. And, and so, but I take your comments to heart about posting it on Engage Missoula and some other ways that we could make sure that folks were notified that this part of the process was actually being achieved, which was, of course, receiving and signing the contract. Okay, I'm gonna pass it over to Mr. Keen first before going on to council comments, just to provide some additional information if I can. Mr. Keen?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll be quick. I just wanted to clarify that this is really housekeeping, that we aren't doing anything here tonight that we haven't already discussed and made decisions on, starting back in February of '23 when we decided to apply for the grant and then additional council discussion following the May Town Hall meeting. And then most recently, a quarter two budget amendment that incorporated this grant money into our FY '24 budget. So this is really just following the process and there will be many other opportunities to discuss in depth the pieces and parts of the project as we move along.
All right, thank you, Mr. Keen. And I'll go back to council questions or comments. Councillor Jones?
Thanks. First of all, Jeremy, thanks for all of the work on this, as we always say. And this is just such an exciting grant to come through and I'm so excited for downtown to have these improvements. I just wanted to also comment that this item has been heard numerous times in council, extensively and with some really big discussions. And Mr. Campbell, I think you weren't on council when this was happening. So I understand, seeing a new item on, under new business, like what is this about? But honestly, this has been substantively discussed numerous times and there's still gonna be some discussion about parking spots, I anticipate. And I don't think that's anything that is, as Jeremy said, this is housekeeping right now. And I think the sooner we get this through, the better because time is money with construction costs. So when we can hit the gas to get this going forward, I'm thrilled to vote yes. So just wanted to note, this has been heard numerous times. And frankly, many of the items in this grant have been discussed for years since I've been on council. And I can't believe that we had the good fortune to land this grant. So I'm happy to vote yes on it.
Thank you, Councillor Jones. Councillor Nugent?
Thank you, Mayor Davis. Mr. Keen basically answered my questions. I wanted to just double check and reconfirm what you said. So the grant application that came through council that was approved, that allowed the city to go out and apply for this, during that process, there were some indications of decisions yet to be made, engineering yet to be done. And those types of, that type of input is still pending through the SAM group, correct?
That's correct. The grant lines out the goals for the project and a basic concept, but we still have to do all of the engineering and we have to do the NEPA analysis to document all of the impacts. So there's still quite a bit of work to do.
And follow up?
Please.
And those goals are in the grant agreement that we're approving tonight are the same ones that council basically approved in the large conversations when we gave authorization for you to apply for the grant?
That's correct. The grant agreement reflects very closely the narrative of the grant application that we put together. So what we said we had set out to do in the grant application is just reflected in this agreement.
Thank you very much.
I'm gonna interrupt real briefly and correct a statement I made. Councillor Campbell, in response to your statement, I had said this was entirely federal, but there is local match associated with this grant agreement. So I just want to make sure that we're clear for the record and that is stipulated in the referral. It's a total of $1,160,000 of local match to the grant award of $24,535,398. Pardon my mistake there. Thank you. All right, Councillor Carlino.
Yeah, just a quick comment and I had one question here. I just feel like our streets are, right now, are designed to make cars move as fast as possible. And I think this change will help prioritize safety and put that, put that forward as one of the top priorities. So I think it's a good change and it's worth, well worth the local money, especially with how much federal dollars we're bringing in. I saw in detachment number two on page five that it says that there's protected bike lanes on Fifth and Sixth or plans for that. Is there plans to change Fifth and Sixth? Or are we, I just feel like a protected bike lane would be some sort of barrier or protection between the cars and bike lanes. And currently, there isn't on there. I was just wondering if there was any updates on Fifth and Sixth or if that should say something else instead of protected bike lanes?
Just take a minute here to get to that information.
I'm looking for it as well, but to answer Mr. Carlino, it's, we are not planning any changes on Fifth and Sixth. I think what it's referring to is that there will be protected bike lanes connecting to Fifth and Sixth that are running on Higgins. But we will certainly clarify that.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, great. Councillor Becerra?
Thank you. As, as I stated before, this is, this is an important step in the timeline of this project. And it's one that we have been expecting, one that we have been anticipating so that, you know, a significant and robust public process can continue. And, you know, if changes are needed to some of the details that, you know, first emerge. first, um, emerge with this project can take place. Um, and Jeremy, you shared a slide that showed all those different steps, um, like, you know, going through the NEPA process and all these different steps. And where we are right now is, um, one of those steps that's going to kick us off into getting to the nitty gritty of all the work that needs to happen. Um, one that will involve a lot of, a lot of the members in the community, significant, um, outreach and education, um, an important component. But all of that can happen only if we have this agreement in place and we're ready to receive the money. So, um, I am looking forward to it and, um, I would encourage you, Council, um, member, um, Campbell, to look through all those, um, meetings and, um, I believe all of them have been recorded, um, uh, with robust, um, public participation in the past. Um, that can give you a pretty good sense of, um, the level of transparency that we have had throughout the, the process for this grant application. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for your comments. Councilor Campbell, sure?
Sorry, one more time. If I may just push back to some degree on what was just said by my colleague, Councilwoman Basera. Yeah, I understand the background of the project. I've been following it before I came on council. I understand the public engagement. I went to the public meeting down at Wilma last summer. So it, my, my concern isn't with the public engagement to this point. My concern was simply the here and now with what's being addressed tonight, specifically with the signing this agreement and the notice that was availed to the public, uh, for this particular event, which is not a trivial matter. I mean, we're talking, again, a great sum of money, a great sum of city money. And I just think for this particular issue here tonight, um, the opportunity for public engagement could be improved upon. So that, that's where I was coming from. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. All right. Any other council comments this evening? Not in the room and not seeing any online. All right, then that will bring us to a roll call vote. Ms. Trimble, when you're ready.
All right. Voting on item 6.1 to approve the grant agreement for the 2023 Raze Downtown Safety and Mobility Project, beginning with Basera.
Yes.
Campbell?
No.
Carlino?
Yes.
Farmer?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Yes.
Nugent?
Yes.
Savage?
Yes.
Cheryl?
Yes.
And Vasika?
No.
That's eight in favor and two opposed.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Trimble. And that then concludes Agenda Item 6.1. Thank you, Mr. Keen. And we will move on then to public comments for items on the agenda. So that includes the consent agenda as well as the regular business. So as a matter of practice, I'll go ahead and ask Ms. Trimble to go ahead and read items on the consent agenda now and then we'll have the opportunity for public comment. Ms. Trimble, go right ahead.
Just a little bigger. On today's consent agenda, we begin with approving accounts payable or claims or checks dated April 16th, 2024 in the amount of $1,324,074.08. We have a recommended motion to set a public hearing on Monday, April 22nd, 2024, to consider a resolution to adopt the 2024 through 2028 Consolidated Plan and 2024 Equity Plan and granting approval of the City of Missoula Unified Application Round Year 2024, awarding Affordable Housing Trust Fund, Home Investment Partnership Program and Community Development Block Grants Funds to certain organizations and directing staff to negotiate contracts and agreements and authorizing the mayor to sign the contracts and agreements with said organizations. We have a motion to adopt a resolution of the city council, awarding $17,819 in neighborhood improvement funds for fiscal year 2024 to certain individuals and directing staff to negotiate contracts with certain individuals with mayor's signature. We have a motion to approve and authorize the mayor to sign a professional services agreement amendment with Morrison Marley for the Moamont Harlequin Water Main Project at a cost not to exceed $161,478. A motion to approve a waiver to MMC 9.30 entitled Noise Control to permit relief from specified levels during a project to install a fiber line four under Reserve Street by TAK West during off-hours at the request of the Montana Department of Transportation during the week of April 22nd, 2024. We have a motion to approve Jackson Contract change order number three for the Northside Pedestrian Bridge renovation project, increasing the contract amount by $183,474.60 and adding 15 days to the contract. And finally, a motion, this is a first reading and preliminary adoption, to set a public hearing on May 13th, 2024 and preliminarily adopt an ordinance rezoning the subject properties located at 455 Mount Avenue and 910 Brook Street, legally described in Exhibit A from R 5.4 Residential and C 1-4 Neighborhood Commercial slash DE-C Design Excellence Overlay Corridor Typology 1-Node to M 1 R 3 Limited Industrial Residential and M 1 R 3 Limited Industrial Residential with DE-C Design Excellence Overlay Corridor Typology 1-Node, subject to the applicant filing the amended plat for subdivision exemptions of, uh, application 2024 MSS SPA 00003 within 180 days of approval of the zoning, subject to review and approval by Development Services and Public Works of Mobility. Otherwise, the rezoning, zoning of the property shall become null and void and the property shall revert to its original status.
Thank you very much, Ms. Trimble. Um, as is our practice, we do have public comment on, on the, on the agenda items for consent agenda as well as regular business. And so the regular business item is, um, a recommended motion to direct staff back to council on an updated sidewalk policy. Um, I recognize the interest by the public and so I'm going to go ahead and, um, offer public comment on both of those items. And so I will just ask for public comment on only the consent agenda at this time. Is there any comment on the consent agenda this evening from the public? Come on up. We get to try the new machine.
Dave Everingham, I live in Rattlesnake. I guess that's District One, Ward One. Uh, I've been kind of keeping track of the construction of Northside Footbridge and it's coming along beautifully. Looks really good. I'm glad we're redoing that. It came apart primarily from too much salt and poor design. So the city really needs to look at how much salt they put on everything. Bank Street parking structures, um, failing from too much salt, no maintenance. Reserve Street Footbridge is being eaten alive by salt because it's Corten metal and they've salted it heavily since it was built and the heating coils didn't work in it. I worked on that bridge. But anyway, uh, we really ought to watch what we're salting. California Street Bridge is starting to rot out from the salt too. Thanks, I appreciate it.
Thanks for your comments, Mr. Everingham. All right. Any others? Any other public comment in the room tonight? Okay, how about online? Okay, not seeing any other comment. Uh, does anyone on council wish to separate any of the items on the consent agenda this evening? Okay, not seeing any. Then we can go ahead and do a roll call, excuse me, we can do a voice vote for the consent agenda. So Ms. Trimble, when you're ready.
All right. Voting on the consent agenda, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? Please say nay. All right, that passes unanimously.
Okay, thank you very much. Great, that brings us to then regular business under item 9 point, wait, let me get to it. 9.1.G. And this is under the Public Works and Mobility Committee Report. Um, we have a motion that was, recommended motion looks slightly different than what the title of the agenda item is. And so, um, I will go ahead and, let's see, I'm looking at our regular business items and, um, we don't necessarily have a staff presentation this evening. We do have a recommended motion, which I'll look to the Public Works Chair for. We do have two counselors that brought the original motion forward. I believe the natural course of order here is to, um, hear the recommended motion that's on the floor and then we can open it up to council questions or comments. How does that sound? Councilor Basera?
Um, I move that we request administration to direct staff to bring back to the council an updated, an updated ci- city sidewalk policy, including considerations for the total city funding as well as any potential standards or materials changes by the end of June 2024.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor. I'd like to open it up to council, uh, questions or comments. Looking around the room, I'm not seeing any. Councilor Basera?
Um, I just wanted to, um, provide a little bit of context and, um, say that, um, the motion that we have on the floor right now will get us to, um, an updated, perhaps a new way of, um, addressing our sidewalk, um, orders and, and issues that we have right now. Um, we will continue to, um, collaborate with the sponsors of the original referral to come up with, um, more clarity and, and more specific direction for staff to bring us back something that we can all look at, um, in the next couple of weeks. Um, and I don't know if Mr. Carlino wants to add anything, but, um, just letting everyone know that there will be more discussion and more, more guidance, um, and more, um, specificity to the motion that we currently have on the floor.
Okay, great. You, thank you. Thank you for that context. I appreciate that. Uh, any additional questions or comments this evening? And Councilor Cheryl, please. Sorry, I went to a different window and got confused.
That's okay. Um, I just have a quick comment. I don't have any questions. Um, I appreciate, um, Ms. Basera's, uh, working with the sponsors to, to clarify. This was a little messier than we normally are, um, trying to find a way forward, but, um, last Wednesday. But I think that, you know, considering budget season is coming up and that's something that we need to really take under consideration as we look at this. Um, I liked the change in the motion and so I'm happy to support it and I appreciate Everingham bringing it forward and Ms. Basera working with the sponsors, um, to clarify what we're asking staff to do specif- more specifically.
All right. Thank you very much for your comments. Are there any others? Okay, not seeing any other council comments. Any council comments online? Not seeing any then. And I'll go ahead and open up the opportunity for there to be any public comment specifically on this agenda item. Again, this is a referral to send back a sidewalk policy to staff and for there to be a recommended sidewalk policy coming through by the end of June 2024. Okay, not seeing any in the room. Any online? All right, not seeing any online. Then we'll go ahead and take a roll call vote. Ms. Trimble, please.
Voting on 9.1.G.B., the motion to direct staff to bring back to council an updated sidewalk policy, beginning with Campbell.
Yes.
Yes.
Farmer?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Nugent?
Yes.
Savage?
Yes.
Cheryl?
Yes.
And Vasika?
Yes.
Yes.
And that's 10 in favor and none opposed.
Okay, thank you very much. Then that concludes that agenda item. And, um, we'll next move on to public comment on non-agenda items. So if folks have, um, items that they wish, or, excuse me, not, but public comment on non-agenda items, come on up.
Dave Everingham, I'd like to thank everybody for being on council and the police officers for protecting us. Uh, I wrote this about two months ago and haven't been back, well, I tried to come back, but missed everything. Shows there's some quotes from the mayor's editorial a couple of months ago in the paper. In 2006, I bought a house on Cornerstone Drive in Rattlesnake for $365,000. Now the state says it's worth $1 million. At that time, city SIDs were 1725, taxes were $3,700. Now city SIDs are 950 per year, taxes are 8,000. In 2006, there was two SIDs. Now there are eight. In 2006, city property tax was 10,000, 1,067. 2010, 23, it's 2,719, tripled since 2006. In 2021, Parks SIDs was 120, now it's 400 per year. City Roads SID in 2021 was 216, now it's 416 a year. In two years, these departments have doubled their price. Why so much so fast? Missoula's population has grown 17% since 2006 with a 30% increase in city limits. Missoula government has outpaced the growth of our city by way more than doubled in spending and employee growth. The mayor had a great article in the Missoulian, well-written, nice ideas, quote, "Council Accessibility, Homeless Encampments and Public Health: Code Reform for a Modern City. Urgent Call for Fire and Crisis Support." Building Budget Transparency, very well-written article. Where's the property tax relief we talked about during the mayoral campaign? All this talks about is tax increases. $276 for a $600,000 house for the emergency response and fire. That's 520 a year, uh, 520 a year on my house. $9 million for schools, that's about $600 per year on my house. $1120 increase on my taxes next year. They just went up 1,000 this year. Parks and Recs and Roads Department will obviously group, go up or maybe double. With all the increase in property values and high-end commercial and residential building increases in Missoula, there should be a huge increase in our tax basis. There should be a surplus in tax revenue. Where is the money going? Missourian Development Agency has a total debt of 43 million with a debt service of $6 million, $6 million a year, paid by half the property taxes of TIF districts. This has eaten a huge hole in our tax basis. MRA needs to slow down and scale back. Many of the TIS have gone from sunset dates of 2022 to 20, to 2045 and started in 2006. Some of, a lot of the MRA projects are good and I love the trails and foot bridges. They gave $5 million to a big developer for the Merck Motel. They just gave 500,000 to Rodeo Grandstands, that's county. I don't like cruel animal, animal.
Mr. Everingham, you're about four minutes, so we need to wrap it up.
Okay. We have spent millions on large land deals that sit and develop Scott Street, Johnson Street, sits for seven years. Now MRA is involved in housing. Uh, thanks.
Thank you for your comments. But any other public comment this evening? Not seeing any in the room. How about folks online? Public comment on items not on the agenda? Okay, not seeing any online. And that wraps up our public comment on items not on the agenda. And, um, just briefly, communications from the mayor. I was looking for something that had a lot more detail. I wanted to mention something that was in the consent agenda, reference to the work that the Community Planning, Development and Innovation Department is doing, the housing team and staff. There was mention of a 2024 equity plan. And what I wanted to point out for council is that, um, the Department of Housing and is that the Department of Housing and Urban Development have basically changed the language of fair housing and referring to it as an equity plan. And so that might seem to be confusing as we talk about equity from a local level when we talk about through an equity lens. And as you know, we conducted an equity study as part of our land use and as part of our code reform process. So I just wanted to provide that clarification and we'll continue to provide more as we move forward. And the staff had provided me much better and more language, but I couldn't find it in one of my team's channels. So I went from memory and believe I have that accurately. So that's really all I have this evening. And we'll pass it on to council comments. And I'll start with Councilor Carlino.
Thanks. I didn't have too much to add today. I appreciated hearing from the one public commenter we had today. And I just wanted to point out to everybody that he had written that a while ago and came down to City Council on April 1. When I walked out, I, you know, got to speak with him and he had missed the public comment period. And I said, maybe come back around 7:00, 7:30 so you don't have to wait for too long on the 8th. And then when I was walking out after the 8th meeting, he had missed the public comment period. And, and then today, luckily, we had a short agenda, so he was able to comment. So just wanted to point that out that some people are, and I mean, he's not the only one. I've seen Mr. Moore, who used to comment here all the time, just get up and walk out. So I'm just saying, maybe it's not, maybe the new agenda format in some ways is getting rid of public comments. And in some ways, it does make it easier for people to have the opportunity to comment on anything on the agenda. But just wanted to point that out, that we are missing some public comments because of the new format. And I think we could just keep thinking about it and thinking about how to make it better in the future.
Thank you, Councilor Carlino. Council Campbell?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just pointing out that this week, second week of April, is National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week. So a shout out to our local 911 center, 911 dispatchers. They got a tough job to do. Folks call for whatever emergency they may have, be it medical, be it fire, be it police. You know, it's those seconds in between that seem like years passing by for those folks to show up. And in the meantime, you know, those folks are doing a professional service to get folks the information they need for wherever the case may be as far as an emergency. So a very professional staff they have down there in 911 center. So just a shout out to those folks. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Farmer?
Thanks, I'll pass.
Okay, I'll go ahead and order this evening. And so Councilor Vaseka online, do you have any comments this evening?
I'll pass, thank you.
Okay, you bet. Councilor Jones, pass. Becerra, okay? Councilor Nugent?
I'll pass, thanks.
Okay, you bet.
I'll also pass, thank you.
I just wanted to quickly thank the mayor and Commissioner Strohmeyer as well as President Bodnar for a really interesting, I keep calling it State of the Union, State of the Community event at City Club. And also would just want to give a shout out to City Club. I think that anyone that has not attended, it's really interesting, it has a lot of interesting topics and it is worth following. We had a big turnout today. I mean, that was the biggest turnout, I think. I don't even know when the last time I saw that turnout was. So it was great, they did a great job. I appreciate their willingness to get up there and answer questions and kind of talk about some of our challenges and opportunities that we have.
Thank you, Councilor Cheryl.
I'll pass.
All right. All right, well, that wraps up our City Council member comments. And I do thank you, Mr. Everingham, for your, for your comments. Look forward to the budget process that we'll be engaging in here in the next short order as the month of May really kicks off. Opportunity to take a look at the achievements of our strategic plan. And then as we move into department priority budgets, taking a look at that, getting council comments and the opportunity then to formulate a mayor's executive budget after those presentations. I'm going to take the moment to just also, I should have done this in my own comments, but this weekend, I was just, you know, Missoula, of course, we always have so many amazing things happening. On Saturday alone, there'll be Run for the Trees, which is an opportunity to have a fun run or a little bit longer if you want. I'll be out there in the fun run with the kids, so the one miler. And then it's the Wild Walk this Saturday. So 11 o'clock parade, celebrating International, the Wildlife Film Festival. And so get your funky animal or insect outfit on and come walk down Higgins. And then while there are many other opportunities, there also is the Kiyo Powo at the University of Montana. So that is the Associated Students of the University and the Native American Studies Program. And they put on quite an amazing celebration. So just wanted to mention that for folks if you're looking for stuff to do in Missoula this weekend. All right, then that brings us to the end of our meeting and I will go ahead and adjourn at 6:58. Thank you.